The Sally Button on the subcommittee. David Lowens, David is our legal advisor from MP Law. We've got Rachel Bennett, Rachel is the licensing officer. And Leoni is our committee officer, helping us with the tech, the most important job today. We've also got, we've got a Mr Joseph, who is the objector. And Wendy Story and Phil Steele, who are the applicant and representatives of the applicant. Okay, so first of all, we'll start with apologies. And there were none today and declarations of interest. Looking for indications and there are none. So item number three is the application for variation of premises license. The shop, university plan, UEA Norwich. Okay, and I'll hand over to Rachel to present the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report, members are asked in accordance with the delegation of licensing functions contained in the Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy, Licensing Act of two thousand and three, to consider the application for the variation of a premises license in respect of the shop, university plan, UEA Norwich NR four seven TJ, following receipt of relevant representation. Recommendation is that members determine the application to vary the premises license in accordance with the Licensing Act of two thousand and three, guidance issued under section one eight two of the Licensing Act two thousand and three, and Norwich City Council's Statement of Licensing Policy. The report. The applicant is the University of East Anglia. And in summary, the application seeks to extend the hours for the off sales of alcohol until three AM every day of the week. A copy of the existing license and operating schedule is attached to appendix A of the report. And a copy of the application form is attached to appendix B to the report. Relevant representations. A representation was received from the police. But this was withdrawn after contact with the applicant's agent and director of commercial services. And copies of these are attached to appendix C. No further relevant representations were received from any other responsible authorities. But there was one representation objecting to the application received from a local resident. And a copy of this is attached to appendix D to the report. National guidance issued under section one eight two of the Licensing Act two thousand and three. Attached appendix E are the elements of the national guidance issued by the Secretary of State, considered to have a bearing upon the application. Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy. The Norwich City Council Statement of Licensing Policy was adopted on the first of December twenty twenty one and can be viewed on the Norwich City Council website. Summary. In determining the application with a view to promoting the licensing objectives, the subcommittee must give appropriate weight to the steps that are appropriate to promote the licensing objectives, i.e. the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, the prevention of public nuisance and the protection of children from harm. The representations include in supporting information presented by all parties. The guidance issued under section one eight two of the Licensing Act two thousand and three, national guidance, and the council's own statement of licensing policy. The subcommittee must take search of the following steps as it considers appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Grant the application as asked. Modify the conditions of the license by altering or omitting or adding to them or reject the whole or part of the application. The subcommittee is asked to note that it may not modify the conditions or reject the whole or part of the application merely because it considers it desirable to do so. It must actually be appropriate in order to promote the licensing objectives. The representations received appear to relate to issues that fall under these licensing objectives. Conclude the report. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Okay, so just to confirm, are there any additional papers for today's meeting? No. So now I'll ask Phil Steele if you'd like to present your application, please, and paying particular attention through your presentation to the objections made by, in particular, Mr Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think the most important thing that I wanted to try and put across today is that understanding what Mr Joseph has had to say has been kind of a part of our our reason for wanting to extend the ability to sell off licensed sales on campus. We've worked really hard with our campus security team and Wendy introduced herself, she's recently transferred across from student union to the university within my department. So we're now operating this activity under the auspices of the university and that that gives us a degree of flexibility and the ability to respond very quickly. Should there need to be such as a result of the changes if they are approved. But we've all seen growing concerns around student welfare, around the city. Particularly going off campus late at night. And this is one of the underlying reasons why we were happy to to put the application in and it has come through customer feedback. We know that there is the ability for students currently to walk over to Five Ways. I believe now the food centre on Bothell Road are operating twenty four seven alcohol sales. So I'm hopeful that actually an approval for this change to our license would actually safeguard Mr Joseph's concerns because it will avoid the need for students to be travelling off campus late at night. There was also some concern raised and it was great for Michelle Bartram and I to be able to liaise on this. Because some initial concerns were around flashpoints of people exiting the LCR, coming down to the shop and already having consumed alcohol, then you know, there could be concerns around risk. But part of our plan was that the shop would discontinue alcohol sales at the time of the LCR closing. So there would be no flashpoint, we'd be able to manage that really well. So having undertaken a review with the campus security team and them having no you know, no concerns for this change, we've put the application in. And I was reassured, having spoken with Michelle from the police, that they also now felt that we were you know, we were operating or proposing to operate something that was not unsafe. I think that's it really. It's quite a simple proposal for us. And I do hope, or had hoped that the concerns from Mr Joseph would be, if you like, vindicated, but from our side of having provided a satisfactory response that should de-risk it from his perspective.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll start with questions from members of the committee and then we'll hear from Mr Joseph shortly. Okay, so any questions from members first? Counselor Sands, please.
Hi, thank you for updating with some more information. My understanding, what time does the LCR close? I'm not clear.
For most of their, if you like, club nights, that is a three AM finish.
Okay, so that they, alright, so yeah, I see what you mean now, yeah. I wasn't sure, I wondered if maybe it was a bit earlier, there would be a bit of time, but yeah, it's exactly the same time. The other thing is, my understanding, I represent Bothell Ward, which of course has a lot of your students. My understanding is that the onsite security for UEA, is there twenty four hours? Is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they're very, so you would say they're very close by in if they're in need. It's not a case of we got to ring and there'll be some time lapse.
No, and their patrols are, if you like, regulated and organised in and around the events that are going on on campus anyway. So if there is a big student union club event, club night type event, then we have, you know, we have an increased level of security. But also there's the security that student union provide. So, you know, and the CCTV systems across campus are pretty extensive. So, you know, we have the ability to keep an eye on all of our areas of responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the three o'clock time for the LCR, is that the closing time or last orders?
That's that's closing time, that's kicking out time.
Okay, so everybody's out of the LCR before three o'clock?
Well, at three o'clock, that's when they close the doors. I think Wendy might be able to advise, but I think we normally we normally expect it to be completely vacated within sort of fifteen to thirty minutes.
Okay, and what is the usual, what usually happens after that? Do students, do students hang around in the, in that area? Because this is, the LCR is very close to the shop, isn't it?
Yes, that's right. Well, they don't normally, well, they don't frequent the shop at that point because the shop is normally closed. So there is a fries van, so there's a small food van outside. Wendy might be able to advise, I can't remember what the closing time for that. I think that's within an hour of the LCR closing. So they're already, there will be people congregating, but the vast majority would be making their way home. And obviously for those students that are on campus, that's, that's within the campus perimeter. But some may be going to the village and some may be in local accommodation across the city, normally close by to campus though.
Okay, thank you. And the original concerns from the police and the committee notes that they've withdrawn these concerns. But the original concerns from them were around dispersal and extended drinking hours could cause increased intoxication and issues around vulnerability. And that is obviously a, that's a real concern for young people at the moment. And crime and disorderly behaviour could increase as a result of the extended drinking hours. So can you explain in more detail how the operation that you've got in place and the security that you've got in place will mitigate the potential for these concerns?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the combined security details that we have. So the university operates its own security service and the student union bring in. They have their own security personnel for their activities in the student union building. They liaise together, they're in radio contact all the time. So if there was an unusual buildup of of, you know, of students in and around that space, it's it's normal for our security to be in attendance. The security office is literally at the top of the road that the driveway down to the union, so they're very close anyway. We did talk about the, you know, increased drinking on campus. And the issue for us is that if students want to drink on campus, they will do anyway. We have had a, it's not a large number of requests. We're doing this really because, not because we're going to generate a huge amount of business for this, but it is to avoid our students having to go off campus if they want to be purchasing alcohol late at night. So, you know, we've looked long and hard at whether or not this we believe in, in Lisa, with our security team and our student support team, whether or not there would be any enhanced concerns. As I mentioned at the beginning, since the transfer of the operation of the shop to my division within the university, we are very, very clear and able to make adjustments to our alcohol sale times. Should there be any increased risk or increased concern. Our security team and the community policing team are in close contact all the time. You know, not just around alcohol sales, but obviously around student behaviour, et cetera. So I'm very confident that we can keep a close eye on this and that the systems that we've got in place already will circumvent any undue concern.
Okay, thank you. Can you describe what your, what action is taken by your security and other staff? Should there be a flashpoint in the areas that you cover?
I mean, the normal circumstances would be, they would obviously, I mean, if there was a particular incident, then they will come in and deal with that as per their remit. But most of the time it is just about ensuring safe and sensible dispersal. So, you know, and there isn't a need at this point. And there isn't a regular situation where the students are hanging around for long. As they come out, those that may want food will take the food. Because the shop will have shut and will not be selling alcohol at the time that they're coming out en masse. There'll be no need or reason for them to hang around anywhere.
Okay, thank you. So incidents might cover fights or that kind of unpleasant behaviour, but also students that have been drinking might be rowdy and quite noisy. What approach do you have to noise from students in the area? And this is relevant, I think, to Mr Joseph's concerns.
Yeah, I mean, so I think it's really pertinent to remind everybody that the application for us to sell alcohol late has got nothing to do with the LCR noise because that's already something that's happening on campus. If I've understood Mr Joseph's concerns correctly, it was about noise being generated off campus from people walking home rowdy after being at the club. Again, that's not necessarily relevant to shop sales. But again, our security can track behaviour of students as they're walking off campus. Part of my remit is the sports park and for a period it seemed to be quite a favourite for people to nick the car park barrier. Well, our security could follow those individuals completely on CCTV right onto the village. So, you know, we can keep an eye on students that are in larger groups and if there are any scuffles, they're very quick to respond and, you know, to disperse and get them home safely.
Okay, thank you. And just to confirm, is your belief that allowing additional off-sales from the shop may reduce the impact on Bluebell Road in particular, people visiting Five Ways Garage? Can you confirm Five Ways Garage has a twenty four hour licence, does it?
As far as I'm aware, yes it does, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Right, I think anything else from councillors at this stage? Okay, so I think we'll hear from Mr Joseph. Would you like to address the committee, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Okay, great. I suppose my feeling is, this is an aside, I don't find, I live on Bluebell Road. I don't find the UEA very good neighbours. As soon as the people who are off campus, they're not their responsibility. And if I've ever rang to talk to anyone, no one's ever deigned to get back to me. That's an aside. I think, I think I'm quite shocked about this because you've got young people coming to a place to study. Maybe I'm naive, but why are they needing to have alcohol at three o'clock in the morning midweek? If you go on the campus, you've got a waterstones that's closed down, but you've got a shop selling alcohol at three o'clock in the morning. What sort of signal is that sending to young people? You know, Mr Steele makes a good argument about, yes, they could wander off to twenty four hours alcohol places locally and that is a risk and that's a good point. My question is, why are those licenses being allowed? No one, you know, there's a lot of talk about student suicide, et cetera, et cetera. And no one seems to be questioning this. It seems preposterous to me that it's being allowed. And I think that's my main argument. You know, there's a big concern here about them drinking alcohol and the effects of it. With regard to staff security, I'm sure that a lot of students are going to be bothered by people drinking late in the hours. They're not going to be calling staff security because it's going to be low level, but it's going to be keeping them up. You know, if you live in dormitories or whatever, not dormitories, sorry, you know, those flats, it's going to be seen as a usual thing. So it just bothers me that it's even being considered. I think the councillors need to go and walk on that, that walk in the UEA if they don't already and have a look. Because you've got the waterstones all closed down, so there's no bookshop there. You've got a coffee place and then you've got a shop selling alcohol three AM with a big, probably have a big advert saying it as well. So it just doesn't give the good, a good feeling to me, to students. And I think that's my argument. I mean, if people want to go ahead, let you go ahead, you know.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions you'd like to ask of the applicant or applicants, please?
No, no, I mean, Mr Steele wrote me a letter, which I appreciate it. I've heard his arguments, so.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to that, Mr Steele?
I think the issue around why we're doing this, I hoped I'd made that clear. This is to avoid the need for students, if they have the need, the desire to have to go off campus. I think the other thing, the police confirmed this, that they are aware that we used to sell alcohol. I mean, Wendy's advised me that when the student union were operating the shop, it has been as early as four AM in the morning. We've not got a history of there being issues from the sale of alcohol that late. So I'm very confident that this will be done in a controlled manner. We don't sell to alcohol to people that are clearly inebriated. I mean, all of the licensing laws around sale of alcohol will be observed. Our staff are not in an intimidated situation because it's, at that point, it's a hatch. Similar to, you know, if you go to a garage at night, you know, the staff are protected there inside. So I appreciate the wider ramifications that Mr Joseph has alluded to. You know, I work closely because of the departmental responsibilities I have around accommodation, catering, et cetera, that we work with our student support team, service team. And this, this may have been a concern in the past, it's not at this point in time. And that's because we generally have good discipline on campus. You know, the fracas that may come about are actually, you know, from within the LCR activity. And that's, that's not what we're, that's not what we're requesting any change to at the moment. That's, that's not within my scope of responsibility.
So how will staff get home after their shift?
We have a taxi service that provides them a safe, safe journey home, Mr Joseph, and that's provided by the university.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, thank you. So one of the points that Mr Joseph has made is that he feels that the UEA is not a good neighbour. And while you're not responsible for students when they leave the licensed premises, the licensable area, if you like, the being a good neighbour is important as a licensee. So how would you normally respond to neighbours if they phone up late at night and complain about noise?
I have to say, I can't accurately respond to that because I'm not, I don't have any responsibility in that area and I've not had to deal with it. But, I mean, our security team, as you asked, and I confirmed that they're twenty four seven, so that that number is available. I can't obviously respond to Mr Joseph about not having had responses to previous complaints. I mean, I'm going to be very happy to feed back to our securities manager as a result of the hearing today to explain that there may be a gap in our, if you like, community service area there. But, but I, you're right, once they exit campus, they're not our responsibility. We do and have chaperone students over the road, over Earlham Road to the village, because obviously that is our responsibility. But I suppose I, you know.
Could they be, I mean, I'm wondering why they're coming along Bluebell Road if they're going because they're sort of walking along Bluebell Road and you're thinking, if they're going to the village, well, I don't know where they're going, I'm not following. Can they not all be funnelled through, you know, past the sports park instead of wandering up through different areas?
Chair, I'm not sure this bits particularly helpful to the application.
Yes, it is. We are talking about the issues relating to the UEA rather than the application for the variation. However, it might be something that Mr Steele and Mr Joseph could continue after the meeting and that might be.
I don't think that's his remit, so.
I'm happy, I'm happy to act as a point of contact if we can, if we can do better in effect, yeah, absolutely.
That sounds good. So returning to the application, are there any more questions? David, did you have any questions about the operating schedule?
Chair.
Then we'll come to.
Just a couple. Oh, I'm pleased to say I've not muted myself. That makes a nice change at these committees. Thank you, yes. From the point of view of when the hatch is used, there seems to be some confusion whether it's midnight or twenty three hundred, should the application be granted. Could the UEA help please with when the hatch will be used? Because I've read both on the papers.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so the shop closes at twenty three hundred hours. And then once the shop closes, the night hatch opens, which is the night hatch is run through our installed bakery, which is attached to the shop. So we then have two to three members of staff who obviously take the orders at the hatch after eleven o'clock at night and the other person will run and do the getting of the groceries. And then that will open, yeah.
Thank you. The reason I raised it, and I've now found it on page thirty two, I don't know if you have the agenda in front of you. But it says, hello, Maxine, second line after that, the agent, the applicant has kindly agreed to accept the following condition of the premises licence. The shop will use a night hatch from midnight until close. And just for clarity, should that say twenty three hundred hours or do you want to keep it to midnight?
No, it should say twenty three hundred hours.
Are you making that change to the application?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Thank you. The only other thing was that at the moment, the CCTV can be provided to the police, but there's no mention of providing CCTV to the licensing authority. I don't know if that's deliberate or an omission or something you'd be interested looking at.
Yeah, I can't answer that, David. I'm not sure why not, but I would, I would suggest we have no reason to not provide it to the licensing authority if it was requested.
So is that something you're happy to change the current conditions on, or is it something you're relaxed about the council imposing?
I'm relaxed about the council imposing.
Right, okay, thank you. It's relevant to the question of appeal rights. That's the only reason I raise it. It's a technical matter. Chair, thank you. I don't think there was anything else from me.
Okay, thank you. And just a question that occurred to me and then we'll come to councillor Button. So you mentioned that when the hatch is open, members of the public or students in this case will be able to buy alcohol and groceries as well. Will they have access to all the lines for sale in the shop through that system?
They will, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Button, do you still have a question?
Yeah, that was similar to what you were saying there, Ian. Is this primarily for just students or will people be able to come on campus from anywhere as the public to use the shop? That was one. And did you want to answer that? And the other thing was about the conditions. I need just something to clarify, please.
Okay, so could you answer that question first about access?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't control or stop the members of the public coming onto campus. And obviously if they come to frequent one of the event nights at student union, we have a mix of, you know, local community and students frequenting those. So it's a possibility. But with the convenience stores, I mentioned Bothell Road and Five Ways in the local area being open twenty four seven, I don't envisage anybody needing to come onto campus for that specific. I, I don't envisage anybody needing to come onto campus for that specific item, you know, for, for that specific issue.
Thank you. And regarding conditions, you have challenge 21 in your conditions. Do you actually have, um, a refusals book? Because there doesn't make any mention of that in the conditions.
Yes, we do. We actually do challenge 25 in the shop and all the staff are trained and they've all also had licence and training. So, and we do have a refusals book.
Okay, that's fine, because there's no mention of it in conditions.
It's actually through the till system, through our EPOS system. We do it through that and it's recorded so we could take reports.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. As a result of that, would you, um, would you like to change, um, the, uh, challenge 21 policy to read 25?
I, I'm happy to, Wendy, if you are.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, happy to, Ian.
Okay, thank you. And also, um, you mentioned that there is a refusal, refusals book. Um, is that something you'd like to add as, um, uh, as part of your operating schedule?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll need some wording for that. Um, David or, uh, one of the applicants, please.
Wendy, do you want to maybe just describe briefly how it's op- how that's operated and then David?
Yes, we have two, we, yeah, we have two ways of doing it. On the till, when someone buys alcohol, that will prompt the person who serve them, challenge 25. And it gives them the date of birth, which they have to look at. So they will only accept a photo card, drive and licence or a passport. We don't accept any other form of ID. And we then, that will record it, but we also have a refusals book as well. At the point of the till.
Thank you. And does that refuse?
Same for Camelot and the lottery as well.
Okay, and does that refusals book include, um, refusal to serve, uh, people who are intoxicated?
Yes, yes, we wouldn't do that at all.
Right, okay, um, thank you. Presumably, um, the, uh, uh, average age of students being quite low, that is something that's, um. Um, but, uh, a common part of the age transaction.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, any other questions? Um, and a last opportunity, uh, also for Mr Joseph, if you have any questions. Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Mr Steele or, uh, Miss Story, uh, if you'd like to, oh, uh, sorry, uh, David, please.
Hello Chair, you asked me to put together some wording for that refusals book. So I'm just busy doing that. Um. Is the refusals book kept in written or electronic format or both, please? Thank you. Right, so proposed wording, refusals book, comma, held in both written and electronic format, comma, will be kept to show refusal of sale of any age restricted product. Comma, to be available to the police or licensing authority on request.
Sounds fine to me, David. Wendy, I guess that, that supports what you've just said.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the benefit of Mr Joseph and members of the public that may be watching. Um, uh, the reason that, uh, we are, um, talking about the operating schedule and adding items to it. Is so that the committee has a full, um, and legally enforceable, um, operating schedule to, uh, consider as part of the application. Uh, it is by no means, um, uh, an indication of our determination at this stage. Uh, so, um, David, is there anything else from you?
No, thank you Chair, unless there's anything you want me to look at, I don't think so.
Okay, uh, Mr Steele, uh, would you like to, uh, just, uh, make a closing statement?
Well, yeah, sure, thank, I just want to thank everybody. Um, you know, I hope that the reassurances we provided today. And to, to explain that this is not something we've taken lightly, we've looked into with our support services in security and student, the student support team. Um, you know, we're doing this with, with an understanding of our obligations, but more importantly without, um, this raising major concerns for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, thank you everybody for attending. What we'll do now is we'll, uh, make our determination. Um, I would suggest, uh, maybe, uh, 20 minutes or so. So if we, uh, if we return at, uh, quarter past 11, uh, that requires members of the public to stay in the, uh, waiting room. Um, and then you'll be called when we, um, when we're ready, uh, and we will, uh, we will move to another, um, uh, electronic room. Uh, make our integration and then come back to you. So back course past 11, please.
Super, thank you.
Yeah, just give me a couple of minutes just to sort that out there with me too, so.
Thanks, Fiona. Thanks, Leanne. Thanks, Leanne. I'll just let everyone from the waiting room back into the meeting and we are still live chat. Okay, just, we'll just wait for everybody to come in. Just a reminder that we're still live streaming at this part of the meeting.
It looks like we've got everything, everyone except Miss Dory. I don't know if she's gone and had to go and has to have to go somewhere else. I'm not sure.
Mr. Steel, can you give us an update on Wendy's stories whereabouts, please?
I, I don't, I don't know. She was going to dial back in. My clock is saying a little bit before quarter past, but if you wish to progress.
No, that's fine. We'll, we'll give her, we'll give her a moment or two.
Yeah, sorry. I, I'm happy if we need to though, to, to crack on. If there are not going to be any other technical questions that she'd be more knowledgeable of than myself.
Well, this part of the meeting is just to deliver the determination and then ask any cover the, the legal aspects and, and ask about any, any questions you may have. We'll just give, just give for a moment or two.
Ian, I've just had a, a message across. She's dialing back in because it, it dropped her out. So she'll be here in a second.
Okay, while we're waiting for that, Leanne, can you just confirm that we're live so that when I, I start, we are?
Yeah, we're still live chat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ian, Wendy's saying she's struggling to get back in. Would Leanne be able to resend a link or I can, I can ask her to stand down either way?
Well, if you're able to relay the determination to her immediately after this, and of course, the there will be a recording of this on, on the YouTube, on our YouTube channel. So shall we just proceed? And then you can relay the determination.
Yeah, happy, happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. So welcome back to everybody. It's a licensing subcommittee Norwich City Council, Thursday 20th of January 2022. We're determining the application for variation of a premises license for the shop university plane EVA Norwich. Okay, and the, the determination of the committee is a unanimous decision to grant the the variation as applied for and amended through the committee. We heard from Mr. Joseph, the objector, and we did consider your concerns. And we know that there are some issues in the area. The, the committee doesn't believe that they'll be increased as a result of this application and, and they may even be improved in certain aspects. And David will go through the, the reasons for our decision in a moment. I'll just remind members of the public and Mr. Joseph that if there are issues with relating to this license and any other license, there is a review process that you can begin with the council by contacting us with the, with evidence to suggest that licensing objectives are being breached. So just a reminder, there is a review process. So it's in the interest of the applicant to make this work. Okay, David, please. So if you just like to do your bit, thank you.
Uh, thank you Chair. A couple of minor matters before, I'll be preparing a written note of today's decision. So I'll try and get people's titles right. Mr. Steel, could you confirm your job post, please? Director of Sport and?
Commercial Services.
Thank you. And Miss Dory, Head of Catering and Retail?
And Retail, yes.
Lovely. So in bullet point form, and as I say, a more detailed written note will follow to everybody in a few days. The committee views the applicant as having given careful consideration of the police concerns and has placed mitigation where appropriate regarding security and so on. Mr. Joseph's concerns have been considered, but the committee does not feel this variation will increase the noise disturbance off campus. And as the Chair has just mentioned, it may marginally reduce foot traffic. The police are the council's primary source of advice on the crime disorder licensing objective. And the council gives significant weight to the fact that they are happy with the proposal. Proposed behaviour of persons outside the control of the premises license holder is a matter for individual responsibility. And that is in the section 182 statutory guidance, to which the committee obviously gives careful consideration and due weight. And we note changes, such changes to the operating schedule regarding challenge 25 and a refusals book, et cetera. So those are the primary reasons. Right of appeal, any person who's made a relevant representation who wishes to say that effectively this decision is wrong in whole or in part may apply to the magistrate's court for a magistrate's court appeal to be exercised within 21 days of written, of receipt of written notification of the decision appealed against. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, we lost Mr. Joseph and I'd like to thank him for attending and our applicants as well. And that draws the meeting to a close.